Hi, my name is Joe Layton. I'm the Town Manager in Upton, and I'm joined by Michael Antonellis, Director of Land Use and Special Services. And we're going to go through the zoning articles that are going to be considered by Special Town Meeting. Special Town Meeting is going to be on Tuesday, November 12th, starting at 7:00 PM at Nimmuck Regional High School Auditorium. Mike, can you run through the zoning articles we're going to be looking at reviewing at Town Meeting?
Absolutely. So the first one, Article 24, is what's known as the 5G Bylaw, and this might look familiar. This was actually on for annual Town Meeting this past May, but ended up being pulled last minute just due to some technical and logistical issues with it. But it's the same bylaw that is being proposed at this Special Town Meeting. So again, it's referred to as the 5G Bylaw. The term that's used is "small wireless facility." These are small local antennas capable of carrying low-power wireless signals, defined in detail by federal regulation, which typically limits size, visibility, and wireless power output. Now, without published procedures, suppliers can come into town and propose where they would like to put them and install them. You just need to get the typical permits either through the Select Board's office or through the code enforcement. And so this bylaw just seeks to identify it as a use so that new rules and regulations can be implemented. This enabling bylaw then instructs the Planning Board to develop detailed policies and procedures. Next slide. 5G is defined as a collection of new telecommunications methodologies, some aspects which are already in use, and it's targeted at mobile networking devices. Obviously, it's your phone. Small wireless facilities are antennas, limited in size and power, and those are just a part of what is referred to as 5G, but this bylaw seeks to regulate the use of these small wireless facilities. 5G is typically uses existing radio cellular wavelengths. Higher wavelengths, millimeter wave, are anticipated for future high-tech purposes. Small wireless facilities installations broadly serve three purposes: filling in gaps for use, providing community-based internet to underserved areas, and new technology communications which need a high capacity and instantaneous response. So what you're looking at here is an example of the small wireless facilities. This is taken from Watertown. See, the antennas are typically 20 to 40 feet up on telephone poles. An antenna is limited to three cubic feet. Equipment cabinet and power supply is limited to 28 cubic feet. Added to pre-existing poles, as shown here, but also sometimes new poles, just depending on the desire of the supplier. So in summary, the introduction of small cell wireless into the zoning bylaw is really intended to regulate the use of it, because without identifying small cell wireless, it can't be regulated. So the new bylaw adds the definition of small cell wireless to the zoning bylaws, and then in the zoning bylaws themselves, define it as an accessory use requiring a special permit. The new Section G within the existing 300 dash point six two bylaws requires a special permit to be granted by the Planning Board for any of these new uses. It's important to remember that zoning does not apply to streets or right-of-way, but the Select Board can implement similar rules and regulations, and I know they've already been in conversation with the Planning Board about that. Other definition changes and text changes that were made within this bylaw were made in order to be consistent with FCC regulations, and of course, the full text of the bylaw can be viewed at the Town Clerk's Office.
Okay, great. Thank you. So next, we have MBTA Communities, and this is something that's been in the news quite recently as well, and in some ways also conflated with 40B, both regulations addressing housing. How does MBTA Communities, how does that differ from 40B?
Well, so if you ask the state, the state will tell you the MBTA Communities law is intended to create new housing. It's being used as a housing tool to create new units of housing within the state, specifically to be transit-oriented development. And so the difference with that versus what 40B is, people might be familiar, is the inclusion of affordable housing. 40B is specifically a state law and program that is for the implementation and creation of new affordable units. The MBTA Communities law is for the creation of new units, market rate units, not affordable. But as we get into, there are provisions that towns can enact their own rules locally to require an affordable component within the MBTA community. So this is Article 25 on the Special Town Meeting warrant. This is for a zoning map and zoning bylaw amendment, known as MBTA Communities Bylaw, and we'll be using locally the acronym MCMOD, and that stands for MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. Section 3A of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, that's the MBTA Communities law. An MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. That's what the law states. It was signed into law in 2021, and we're just now, cities and towns, obviously, as has been in the news, are now coming to adopt it locally, as is required. It requires communities to adopt a local zoning district in regulations to allow for multifamily housing, which is defined as three units or more within a particular structure, a given structure, by right in one or more zoning districts. The law requires the creation of a zoning district, but it's important to note that the district itself is not a requirement for housing production. The next slide. What does this mean for Upton? Upton is defined by the state as an adjacent small-town community. And what that is, is that puts the Upton into a category that just has a lower threshold of units to provide for within the district. So, you know, obviously, a larger town like Shrewsbury or Westboro, would be a better example. Westboro has a T station and has a significantly larger population, but also a significantly larger housing unit population than Upton does. So the threshold for creation of new units is lower for Upton, given those parameters. The Upton's multifamily zoning overlay district must include a total land enough to accommodate a minimum of 5% of the town's housing stock or 150 new units. And again, like I mentioned, that's not a housing quota. That is a zoning district minimum, not a requirement to build. Steps that have been taken up until today, back in January of 2023, the town submitted to the state an interim compliance plan, and that plan outlined how the town was going to achieve compliance by the required time of December 2025. In May 2023, with the support of the Planning Board, the Town Planner, I was able to, with the support of the Planning Board, get $30,000 in grant funds through the Community Planning Grant for technical assistance in order to help achieve compliance with this new law. In June of 2023, the state awarded those grant funds, and RFQ was then issued in order to solicit consultants for use of the funds. We entered into a contract shortly thereafter, selected RKG Associates, which is a well-known planning firm, and what they were able to do is provide what is referred to as economic feasibility analysis. And what that was, was is basically a review of conditions, housing conditions in town, used to justify the inclusion of affordable units within this new district, as I mentioned when we were describing the difference between 40B and this new law. So the proposed bylaw will incorporate a requirement of 12.5% of all new units to be dedicated affordable. And the purpose of that is so that the town doesn't lose ground on the required minimum 10% of affordable housing, as folks might be familiar with. On August 12th, the Planning Board had a public outreach meeting that was held at the community center, and that was really, you know, the Planning Board is inviting the public in to give us ideas and to also present a possible district. So it was, here's the district that we've looked at. Tell them, tell us what you think about it. And if there's any other districts or locations that people think are more well-suited or the Planning Board should at least evaluate further, let us know at that time. You know, after that, the Planning Board ultimately set on the district that they had selected, and that's what's being proposed for Town Meeting.
And just regarding that August 12th, the community outreach effort, one of the things that was discussed in RKG, the consultant was there as well, was not only different locations, but people who attended, they could identify where they wanted to see those locations, right? So it was more supposed to be interactive, get people's ideas, where to locate this district. And ultimately, that effort by attendees also influenced the Planning Board in their recommendation.
Yeah, it seemed, with the different locations that were mentioned, everyone kind of kept coming back to the original location that the Planning Board had looked at going into that meeting. And so I can get into those reasons shortly. The proposed district, as I keep saying, it's hard to define in words exactly where it is, because when you're out on the street there, it's just, it's woods for the most part right now. But it is what's referred to as the Governor's Landing Development Site, which is a 127 units that have already been approved for this site for senior housing. And it's gone through the review processes of both the zoning board and the Planning Board and Conservation Commission, really. And so this is a site that's undergone rigorous review for development, and that was really one of the things that the Planning Board felt strongly about when recommending this district, is, you know, the Planning Board's job in these instances is to recommend appropriate sites for zoning, right? We want to make sure that the districts that we're proposing fit into the town, and the town's character, and everything else that should be considered along with it. And a site that has already been approved for denser development than what is typically allowed in town is, was definitely a selling point for the Planning Board, with, again, keeping with that consistency and appropriateness. The site is also the terminus for the extension of sewer and waters. As folks may know, the town received $3.6 million through the Housing Works Infrastructure Grant Program to extend sewer and water to this site in order to provide Governor's Landing, the 127 units with the infrastructure that they need to support those housing units. So obviously, with the consideration of the future availability of infrastructure that's even able to support a theoretical 150 units, the Planning Board also felt that that was a strong reason to recommend this district. It's not located in a traditional neighborhood setting, you know, in the sense that it's Route 140. This is Milford Street. It is a highway, technically. It's a state highway. And so, you know, obviously, we have other denser developments along Route 140 with the proposed, now permitted, 40B just up the street, but as well as the existing 149 Main Street, which is in West Upton, as well as most of West Upton in that village area being a lot more dense. But this is, this particular site is also located in the existing general business district. So the 300 feet, as is shown in this map here, the 300 feet off the road and then up and down those parcels is a general business zone. And since that area was already approved for housing, it made sense to continue with the housing within that district. And so here, you can see the underlying zoning of, or the existing zoning of the town with the circled area of the general business district. So that's where it'll exist, sort of in context with the rest of the existing zoning. Some frequently asked questions, as was already discussed. Is this a requirement to build? It is not a requirement to build the 150 units. It is a requirement to select and provide for a zoning district that can allow up to the 150 units that is required. But folks should also be aware that if you are zoning for a particular use, you have to expect that use will eventually take hold and become a reality. So while it is not a requirement to build, it's a requirement to provide a zoning district, you have to be prepared for that reality. And, you know, do these units, do the units within the new 40B development count towards this requirement? It is not at all related to any new or recent 40B approvals. This is a completely separate requirement from that. So unfortunately, those do not, you know, the most recent 40B that's been approved in town in no way impacts the town's requirement to adopt a new district. When must the town complete the 150 units? Again, it's not a requirement to build, so there's no building quota. There's no requirement to have these constructed by a certain date.
So the only date that is associated with MBTA Communities is the December 31st, 2025, where towns must designate through Town Meeting approval that location.
Exactly. And, you know, some of the reason, I know the question has been posed, you know, December 31st, 2025, it's, here we are in November 2024. Why are we, why are we doing this now? Can't it wait? And the reason why the Planning Board is proposing this now is because the Planning Board felt strongly that they didn't want to be in a situation where come December 31st, 2025, they find out that the town doesn't like this proposal, and then votes it down in Town Meeting, and then the town is out of compliance with the law. And the Attorney General's Office views compliance with this law as mandatory. And so what happens is if the town is found to be out of compliance with this law, we lose a lot of grant funding opportunities with that. You know, I mentioned the $3.6 million from the infrastructure grant. That money would, you know, definitely future money available through that grant program would not be available to the town, as well as a significant amount of other grants. And I don't know how the state would view existing awards of grants either. So, you know, it's better to know now and pose this question now than to find out at the very last minute and be out of compliance. No, that's a big reason why. But the other reason why is because they've been looking at this a lot since January of 2023. They've settled on this district, and they didn't feel as though waiting until the last minute just to be in theoretical compliance with that timeline was justified. They figured we should, if we have selected the district now and there's support for this district from amongst the board, then we should proceed with it now. And so, you know, there's a lot with this law. And so I'll just pause before I get into the additional bylaw components. I'll just say, if folks have questions about it, please reach out to me. I'm happy to sit down and explain what I can if there are questions, as I've done a number of times. So, within the actual contents of the bylaw, you know, the regulations that'll be promulgated with this new district, some of the considerations and additional components are, you know, I talked about how the district is going to be located on an existing general business district. You know, not wanting to lose out completely on potential future commercial space, and, you know, those are commercial tax dollars that come back to the town. There is a provision to allow for a mixed use within this district. So the potential to have office retail on the bottom, residential on top, as you'd find with, is typical with, you know, village settings and village zoning districts, as is the case with our Upton Center Business District currently. As I mentioned, any development providing eight or more units will have to dedicate 12.5% of the total units as affordable, and that's so that the town doesn't lose ground on the required 10% minimum per 40B. There will be a 2.5-story maximum in building height for any new construction under this district. That was, I feel very important to the Planning Board. You know, there's concern about massing and height and being out of scale with the context of the community. So 2.5 stories is obviously equal to that of your typical single-family home being built today. So not towering over neighboring houses or just looking, just standing out from the town as being incompatible. And with that, there's a maximum building coverage of 30% per parcel, and that's, again, to prevent that massing of, you know, just almost, we want to avoid a situation where we're creating city blocks, right? This is, Upton is a rural town, and obviously, the town wants to maintain that to the extent that we can. And so requiring a 30% maximum building coverage for any particular parcel limits the ability for any particular development to create that massing that you may feel as though you're in a city block or something like that. So it cuts it up and allows for the differentiation between buildings. Any new development with four or more units requires site plan approval through the Planning Board. So it's not necessarily discretionary approval, but it is a site design review through the Planning Board. There is required off-street parking, and compliance will be required with the town's MS4, Small Communities Stormwater Permit, as well as required outdoor common space. I know that was important to the Planning Board, as well as to, if you're introducing more density, especially density relating to housing, you need to have an opportunity for these people to enjoy the outdoors as well. And so that's, you know, that's a lot, but that's it with that. There was an Article 26 that was associated with this, and that was specifically going to be a component within the bylaw that detailed specially permitted, special uses allowed by special permit that are commercial uses, that are allowed within the UCBD district can be allowed within this new district. And the reason why that was separated out is, one, because that was going to create a situation where the approval of this bylaw at Town Meeting was going to require two-thirds instead of majority. But ultimately, after further review with the Planning Board, the Planning Board felt that that section was overly confusing and that we were achieving what we needed to with the mixed-use component that's already detailed in this bylaw. So they actually felt like it's not even necessary anymore, and there'll be a motion to pass over that at Town Meeting. And last but not least, Article 27 is for accessory dwelling units. So this first slide just highlights what is changing within the definitions section of the bylaw. The, as you can see, what is crossed out is the existing use that's allowed by special permit in town, which is accessory apartment. And that's been replaced with what is referred to as accessory dwelling unit. And there's a lot more detail, obviously, within this new definition than was at the previous definition. So I'll just go through it quickly. It's a self-contained housing unit, inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements. It must maintain a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling, sufficient to meet the requirements of building code and safe egress. It is not larger than the gross floor area than half of the gross floor area of a principal dwelling unit, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, and is subject to any additional restrictions that may be imposed by the town, including, but not limited to, size restrictions or prohibitions against short-term rental. So previously, what is the bylaw now is that anyone who has a home, a single-family home in town, can apply to the zoning board for a special permit to get what was referred to, or is referred to, as an accessory apartment, up to 1,000 square feet. And there were certain controls that were in place for that, such that the, one of the tenants of the homes needed to be, you know, the owner of the home. So the owner needed to either be, needed to reside in the principal structure or the accessory. And so those things have been eliminated by the state. So this language is, in that new definition, is taken explicitly from the state's new law. In August 2024, the Healey Administration signed into law the Affordable Homes Act. And part of that act, they amended General Law 40A to allow accessory dwelling units by right across the entire state. Now, by right means no special approvals are required, and it can be obtained simply through pulling of building permits and complying with applicable building code. There are still many outstanding questions regarding this new law, and the state has yet to address a lot of those questions, but they are working to create rules, regulations, guidelines for the state. I don't know if they'll be providing that prior to February of 2025. I doubt that they will. But implementation of this law, regardless of that, goes into effect in February of 2025. So the adoption of this bylaw, the intent is to pretty much mimic and mirror exactly what the new state law has provided as what is required and what is mandatory. The Planning Board felt strongly that they didn't want to vary or differ really in any way from what the new state law says so that the town can come into compliance with that state law and not have a potential for conflict. And also, given that there are lots of unanswered questions with the promulgation of this law, the Planning Board didn't want to, you know, step outside the bounds and make an interpretation one way, only to find out that the state is then going to be interpreted this way. Specifically, the new law and bylaw doesn't explicitly address detached. So as of right now, I don't know if detached is intended to be allowed through the state law. So I hope that the state will give us clarity on that question. You know, so as I mentioned, it was previously capped 1,000 square feet, and that was our local rule, but the state law is now 900 square feet. So the Planning Board has decided to, again, maintain that consistency with state law. The state law is specific that it says, this is only the case in residential zones. You can have an accessory dwelling unit by right in a residential zone. The town's residential zones are agricultural residential, AR, and then single-family residential, A, B, C, and D. So that would exclude the commercial-industrial district. It would exclude the general business district. It would also exclude the UCBD district, Upton Center Business District. The Planning Board, the one thing the Planning Board did do differently than what the law stated is, the Planning Board wanted to provide the ability for the homes and established neighborhoods that already exist within those districts to be able to at least apply to get an accessory dwelling unit, as is currently the case anyway. So under the current law, bylaw, anyone in those districts can apply for a special permit through the zoning board. If the Planning Board were to propose language that was only exactly consistent with the state law, it would eliminate the ability for those folks in those districts to even apply for a special permit for the use. So they wanted to maintain at least that local consistency of, especially out in West Upton, where we have a commercial-industrial district. where we have a commercial industrial district that is really largely occupied by neighborhoods and single-family homes. To remove that option from them didn't seem fair. So they wanted to provide at least the opportunity for them still to apply for a special permit to get an accessory dwelling unit. And that's really the only difference from the state law. Again, all other jurisdictions and laws apply to accessory dwelling units. If you're adding, if an accessory dwelling unit adds a bedroom and you're on septic, Title V still applies, and you still have to provide for a septic that is large enough to handle however many bedrooms you now have. Obviously, fire code would still apply and any and all applicable building code.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And if anyone has any questions, encourage residents to reach out to Michael. He can be found top floor of Town Hall in the Department of Land Use and Inspection Services. Or feel free to email Michael or myself. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.